Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and start.
Laurie, are you good to go? Over, Lieutenant, are we recording, sir?
We are.
Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, July 27th. All board members for the MUD are present constituting a quorum, and I'll call this special joint session meeting to order. It is 5:37. With that, I will turn it over to Mayor Flurry.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Trophy Club Town Council's special joint meeting with our Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Tuesday, July 27th at 5:37 PM. We have a quorum, just minus Councilmember Girasi, who is on a business trip, and also Councilmember Wilson should be here in about five minutes. We'll go ahead and ask Councilmember Schaffner to lead us in the pledges, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Now, to public comments, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter. The council is not permitted to discuss or take action on any presentations made to the council. Presentations are limited to matters over which the council has authority. Speakers have up to four minutes for the time limit determined by the presiding officer. Each speaker must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics to be presented. You may also email mayorandcouncil@trophyclub.org. We do have someone signed up this evening to speak, Mr. Nick Sanders.
Nick, before you do that, if you don't mind, procedurally, I know this sounds redundant, and it is, but I'm gonna read our citizens' comments, which is essentially the same. It's an opportunity for citizens to address the district board on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action or discuss comments made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear comments on a specific agenda item up to the board addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the president or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form. That includes topics of your statement. Citizens' comments should be limited to matters over which the board has authority. So we got that out of the way twice. Mr. Sanders.
Good evening, council and board. Mr. President Flynn and Mayor Flurry, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to everyone tonight. I guess I get eight minutes as opposed to four if they're too bored.
Take four and be happy, Nick.
Okay, I just wanted to come and say thank you very much for the work that you all do and your ability to work together. Those of us who've been around a long time, we have not always seen eye to eye and worked together as boards and council, and over the years made some significant steps to get that going in the direction that I believe is the best for the future of our town. Several years ago, unbeknownst to us at the beginning, the town of Westlake contracted with an attorney to draft an action that the state legislature would do that would have dictated how we exist or not exist. And that was done without our involvement at the beginning of that. And what I found out for that is that the state legislature, for about 80% of the bills that are passed, are done with one vote. No debate. They all come on the floor, they all vote at one time, and you never really have much to do about it. That item would have done that, had it continued, but it did not. So you're gonna be facing in the next year to two years some significant decisions that both bodies need to make. And it relates to fire, but not specifically to the budget that you're dealing with tonight. But it relates to the fact that in order to be able to deal with this next purchase of a fire vehicle, it's gonna require both of you working together. And I know that the MUD has been setting aside in a very prudent way some reserve funds to be able to deal with that purchase as it comes due. And I know that both parties deal with setting a tax rate and dealing with that balance of total tax rate that's made up of interest and sinking and operations. And so it takes working together, it takes planning together. And so I just want to encourage you, as you look at this budget tonight and you look at that potential future expenditure of a new fire vehicle, that the MUD has been working diligently to try to have some funds to make that easier. The town has to address how they're gonna deal with their debt issuances and tax rate, and somehow you need to come together. You probably don't remember all the steps that these bodies had to go through just to get where you are tonight, where you jointly approve a fire budget, that all the fire employees work for the town, that you have an interlocal agreement that dictates how water, wastewater, and deal, things like that, work with the pit. It's not simple, it's complicated, and that's the way our town is. So I just challenge you to be focused on making steps in the right direction, and if you make those small steps over the next couple of years, it will make everything, I think, work better and help all of us in the future. So thank you very much for your time tonight, and thank you for your willingness to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Now, on to item one, take appropriate action regarding the approval of Trophy Club Fire Protection Services Fiscal Year 2022 budget. I'd like to ask Wade Carroll and Chief Jack Taylor to start our presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, directors, before Chief Taylor gets started, I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Taylor, and thank you for your support for both the MUD Board and our council in putting together the fire budget. Chief Taylor's done an excellent job, has met the requirements, or not requirements, but the suggestions that we've come up with from council and from staff on coming in with a pretty flat budget as compared to the previous year. And he's done an amazing job of managing the budget that he was handed as he came onboard this year through COVID challenges and through, really, an unprecedented year that he's had with injuries in the fire department as well that few fire chiefs have to deal with. So I applaud him for his efforts and the job that he's doing as fire chief. Thank you. With that, Chief, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you. Suggestions, sometimes that arm behind your back. I appreciate it. Mayor Flurry, President Flynn, MUD Board, also councilmembers and staff, it's my honor to be here tonight. I have no notes on here that I can see, so I'm gonna wing a lot of this, but I have it in my head, so we'll be just fine. But it's great to be here in person. Last year, I'd just gotten into this position, hadn't been here very long, presented the budget via Zoom. That was quite a bit of a challenge at that time, so we worked through that, we'll work through this tonight as well. I have a short presentation, hope to answer a lot of your questions, and once we're done with that, we'll work through that, and I'll be able to address any concerns or questions that you might have as we work forward through this. And as we stated, Wade talked about, you know, maintaining a relatively flat budget. That's what I was, that was my task this year, and then the part that I control is the services and supplies portion of that. And as you'll see, we've kept that relatively flat, and our goal is to, you know, to raise the bar of customer service. We're always looking for ways to be more efficient, to provide better services to the community, but also do it in an efficient manner that doesn't affect our operations in a negative way. Maintaining that flat budget was our goal. As you'll see, the overall budget increased 0.27%, total $3,900 overall. That includes 0.28% increase in personnel and a 25, 0.25%, $715 in service supplies. I want to reiterate, put this point in here, that the numbers reflect the amended 2021 numbers versus the proposed 2022 numbers. That's what we're looking at throughout this presentation. Just to hit some high notes of some things that have been accomplished during the last year. I was honored to be named as your fire chief last year, March 30th, when I started. One of the first things I was told was, oh, by the way, the ISO assessment's August 6th, or July 6th, excuse me. So that was, I've been through that in my previous department. I know how daunting that can be. So not to be able to plan for that, that's not something you can put off. It's, they tell you when they're coming. It's once every 10 years, and you have one shot at it. So that was around the clock, 24 hours, pretty much, for those several months leading up to July. With a lot of help from all of you and a lot of people in this community and people within our staff, we were able to accomplish this ISO 1 rating when it entered effect in March 1st. We're very, very proud of that. For a town this size to be able to show that we're superior in these areas that we were evaluated on is something to be very proud of. Texas State Farm Marching Association Award we got this year was a gold. We were one of only three in the state that received that award. Very prestigious award. There's another level above that that we are now shooting for. We're actually working through that application process right now. We'll be submitting that by August 1st. So we're at the tail end of getting that submission in. Hopefully, next year, we will maintain that gold level or go beyond that. As you all know, we implemented Squad 681 this last year. In October, we started that during COVID, back in March of last year, to, one, provide more safety for our personnel when they responded to COVID patients, but also protect those patients as well. So we had one paramedic on that squad that was the interaction point for that patient. And that limited the ambulance personnel's exposure to that patient. They needed them, they brought them in. It worked really well for us, but through that, we found that that also added another benefit, that by running the squad with the ambulance and leaving the fire apparatus at the station, we're now able to respond to those secondary runs that sometimes come along, that we no longer had to rely on Roanoke, South Lake. Who experienced that personally? He knows, he knows the benefit of this. But 20 to 25 minute response on those secondary runs, we don't have that issue anymore with that fire apparatus at the station. So that's been very good for us. With that, we increased our staffing creatively through an increase with our part-time personnel. I have a cost on that, we're able to run five at all times. We'll talk more about that if we can get through this. We also have our 2021 ambulance that's on order. Scheduled to be here in November. As everybody's heard, with chips and things, with new vehicles, I just got notified a couple of weeks ago that the chassis was supposed to be here this month. Looks like it's gonna be September. I'm expecting October or November, but hopefully we'll get that September. Right now, we look like we're in the winter. Which is still in the timeframe we were looking for, so we'll be good with that. That's really added benefit to our ENS program. Mission Lifeline Gold Award, cardiac care, that's for STEMI care, and it's a direct reflection on the professionalism and the exceptional ability for our paramedics to discern STEMS, which is S T elevated myocardial infarction, only very severe heart attacks, let's speak, such as very difficult diagnosing and feeling. Our paramedics have that ability to diagnose that, call the hospital, get the STEMI, the cap lab activated before they get there with the patient. We've had tremendous success with that. This year, we've had two of our personnel achieve master's levels, degrees, and accident degrees. We rebranded our fire department, did several things to change the look, and get out and create a social media footprint with the community and let them know what we do. Because when people don't know what to do, they call the fire department. They're not always aware of all the different things that we can do. It's not just fire, it's not just CMS. People have a baby's head stuck in the crib or anything, it would be amazing if we get called on. But we have to think outside the box to be able to mitigate a situation and operate in the gray. A lot of what we do is black and white with a protocol, but there's a significant amount of our job is in the gray. So when people don't know what to do, they call us. We determine a way to correct the problem. We take a lot of pride in that. And through that rebranding, we're trying to branch out, reach out, get people to know who we are and what we're about. 2021 has been very, 2020 and 2021 have been very challenging years. We know with COVID, it's brought about a lot of varying ways to look at how we operate moving forward. We're really focused on ways to try to be more efficient with our operations, try to save costs where we could. One of the things that we've done was 10 years ago, one of the previous chiefs, several years ago, and it was needed, bought new firefighting gear, PPE, our bunker gear, for all of our personnel. It's all of our full-time and part-time personnel. Plus, also bought secondary sets of gear for our full-time personnel for cancer prevention firefighters. If you don't know, we're at a 38% higher risk of getting cancer than any other parent in our job and what occurs with every day. So they got all that bunker gear. The problem with the bunker gear is every 10 years it expires. And so there's a lot of cost involved there. I didn't feel like we could justify having two sets of gear for all our firefighters, but we do need access to a second set so they can be protected when they wash the primary set. So we're smoothing that down now to where we're gonna have a stable sort of speed of bunker gear, PPE, for our staff, where we can fit everybody that's on shift, eight to 10 sets in a, and then when they have a fire, they have, when they get transmission fluid, the carcinogens on their gear, they can get it cleaned, then that clean gear and switch back out. So with that, it's gonna greatly reduce the amount of PPE that we have to purchase. We're looking at coming to a head in '25 and '26. We're gonna have to have a significant request. I'm gonna be able to avoid that now. We're proud of that, and with the help of Deputy Chief Cockburn, good to get our plan to smooth that out, so that's not a big deal. As our training with the challenges that we've been faced with, the focus more online, in-house, and on-duty training, we've also partnered with Roanoke to do a lot of hands-on training on a monthly basis. July, August, we do not do that because of the heat, but we will continue. I appreciate it. We're training with Roanoke. That saved us a lot of funds in our training. And then we go out of house, a lot of the training outside of the house, outside of town, having council members COVID. We put up a lot of restrictions on the opportunities that we've had to go to places and to travel, to go to conventions and things that we've gone to for other training. Get easily in the past, that's been on the hold for the last year, and that should be, we're starting to see those come back. FRI has a huge one that's in place right now in Charlotte. We have two individuals there this week, so we were able to pay that last year, roll that forward with some of the taxes we got from the previous year. Uniforms is another thing that we've done. We changed the look of our uniforms, but not just because we wanted to change the look, but we had a Nomex uniform that was very hot, not very durable, and it was kind of, they were rags. They were very expensive, they were $130 pair of pants, $110 shirt, that's $240 a set that wouldn't last more than a year. We now have the polos and the tactical pants that you see our personnel wearing, committee decided on. Allow them to choose what they wanted to wear. It looks professional, $35 a set. So we get three of those sets for one, what we previously got, and they'll last much longer. So that's just a touch on some of the things that we've done to try to save some costs. Personnel enhancements, and the increase in personnel budget is 0.28%. Even in the future, we're gonna look to add one personnel per shift, that's three total. Right now, as I mentioned, we have five firefighters. Our daily minimum staffing is five firefighters. That's what's on duty every day, we have to have that. If we don't, through a vacancy, whether it's sick leave, vacation, injury, whatever it might be, we have to fill that. There has to be someone in that seat to maintain that staffing, that minimum staffing. So utilize part-time and overtime to do that. Right now, with the increase in our minimum daily staffing to five, we'll obtain that ISO 1. We have five full-time personnel that are hired on each shift. We have 15 in the field right now. Anytime we have any vacancy, we're automatically at overtime vacancies. Try to fill those vacancies with part-time first, try to limit the cost on that. Wearing terror on our firefighters is, they're getting mandated to have a rate of about once every nine days. We have mandatory overtime for our personnel. So that means, in addition to the shifts we're scheduled for, there's also voluntarily, voluntary, voluntary, excuse me, overtime that they can apply for, fill a vacancy. But on top of that, they feel voluntarily mandated. Regardless of what they have planned with their family or where they're going, as long as they have it, actually put in official vacations, we, if they're top of the list, they get mandated.
Do you want us to ask questions now or wait till after you're completed? Okay, so on that particular item, on page six, I think it would be helpful if you could provide both the board and council what that would look like in the future. So in other words, if you could take an additional three-man shift, what that looks like as far as, you know, additional pay, additional benefits, things like that. Maybe even take a scenario where you phase it in over five, 10 years, however long, you know, you'd be the judge. And then what, continuing with part-time? And then maybe even looking, thinking outside the box on what could you, if you just envisioned something that is in between both, you know? Not adding three additional, but not, you know, relying strictly on part-time or overtime, and maybe thinking outside the box and coming up with something. I think it would be helpful for us, I know on council, to see those scenarios and just have all those options and things like that, rather than just a one-size-fits-all.
No, absolutely. We have, we're working on that data. And because this isn't being requested for this upcoming fiscal year.
Right.
I'll definitely, you'll have all the data you need on that. I have that inside and out, I have a lot of it in my head already, but I can tell you that adding three personnel, one per shift, what that'll do is it'll give us six personnel per shift with a five firefighter daily staffing, that won't change. So we have to have two vacancies before we get to an overtime situation. So that's gonna save us a tremendous amount of overtime and part-time as well. Now, the outside-the-box part, I think, really was already in place. That's our part-time, that's something that's not done in a lot of places, but the part-time personnel that we have is very beneficial, because I can pay them to fill those voids. It doesn't cost me as much as opposed to overtime, so I give them priority. They have priority over our personnel for overtime, and they know that even if our personnel wanna sign up for voluntary overtime, they know that if a part-time person wants that shift, they get it first, because it saves the town and the MUD money every time we do that. That's one thing we're working forward with on that. Roughly, you're looking at $80,000 paying benefits for a firefighter to have.
Right.
Those are $240,000, but then the net, that's what we need to work through to get those numbers. This is an odd year, because if I showed you the numbers from this fiscal year, it's gonna really benefit me, because it's out of the ordinary, and it'll be skewed in a strong need for that. But in a regular year, we're still in need for it. I'm very confident that I can show you those numbers.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I think it would just be helpful, and maybe even do pros and cons. I just remember when I first got on council, you know, Danny Thomas said, "If we can just have four, if we can just have four, you know, that's all we'll need." And then it went to five, and now it's going to six. So I think it's just helpful for us to know, especially with build-out of the town, you know, we know where we're gonna be, and I think Wade has done a good job as far as projecting, Wade and Mike, as far as projecting. So if you can slot that in, different scenarios, I think it would help council and the MUD Board.
Absolutely, thanks.
Chief, if I could, just briefly. Back on the comment about Nomex versus cotton. When the firefighters put on their bunker gear, do they stay in their uniforms, or do they do something else when you put the bunker gear?
Still have our duty uniforms. It could vary, if they're working out, that they have just their shorts, or if it's nighttime, they come from the bed, they'll probably have shorts and a t-shirt.
I know from spending a career in Nomex, one, it's a fireproof, fire-resistant substance, so it's designed for you, and that aspect, but it's also very hot to wear. So I'm sure that when you made the decision to move to cotton, you kept those things in mind.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Chief, I got a quick question for you. On these numbers, and you proposed an additional person on each shift, correct?
Yes, sir.
In these budget numbers, I'm looking at the percentage of the increase. Did you increase the benefits cost with that, like medical, dental, things like that?
I said it's roughly $80,000 for paying benefits to add one personnel. Now, there's nothing in the budget, we're not requesting personnel.
Yeah, this does.
Moving forward, maybe next year, we're gonna look at asking to add additional personnel.
Nick, the year, the budget for 2022, 23?
Possible.
Okay.
It won't be for 21, 22.
Okay.
I'm just touching on the fact that down the road, because we've made that adjustment for ISO, but we raised our daily staffing, we haven't adjusted the staffing itself.
Okay.
So there's a point where there's a threshold where our personnel continually are getting beat up on that mandatory overtime. So that's something that I plan to address in the future, whenever it's directed by my town manager and all of you. But I want you to know that's something that's on my plate, and that's not something that's being requested right now for this upcoming fiscal year. That wasn't clear.
Yeah, I probably misunderstood you, but the percentage on unemployment was up like 50%. And everything else is pretty much the same. You know why that was so high?
Unemployment?
Yeah.
Well, before, Jade, the suggestion, before we get into the questions, the details, why don't you go through the presentation and then the numbers and...
I ask.
But it's, no, it's a good, it's a good point, Philip, I mean.
We'll get to that.
You wanted to?
Amendment proposed, as we said, those are the differences there, 0.27% change overall.
Chief, do you have the percentage from the original budget unamended?
Unamended, unamended 2021 to propose a 2022 is 4.99% change, 67%. That includes that mid-year, the raises that were put in place for the place of fire.
Yeah, would be included in that step up.
Yes, sir. So if you look at it from that amendment, for the amendment, where we are opposed, 4.99%, correct, $67,000. From amended proposed, it's 4.7%. Part of what we are requesting, a very important piece this year, is to replace reserve engine 681. That engine is a 2007, and it's in the service, it's 15 years, which would be 2022, as NFPA standard, the recommended standard for a piece of fire apparatus. What we would like to do, and I'll explain how we're gonna go through this process, but this piece of equipment, it's been around for a long time. It's served our community very well, it's 60,000 miles on it. It doesn't sound like a lot, but you have to understand when we work with fire apparatus, whenever it's on scene, most of what we do is that idle or high idle. Idle rule of thumb is 40 road miles, which is one hour of idle time, where we have 5,600 hours of idle time. Sixty, you're getting up around $300,000 worth, 300,000 miles worth of road wear on this piece of equipment. In the last five years, we've had over $76,000 in repairs on this piece of equipment. We'd like to replace engine 681 with a new engine or pumper like it, but just newer, not to exceed $850,000 in total cost as opposed to an aerial truck that, right now, is running 1.3 to 1.5 million. Give you some perspective on that. Usually, we deal with the vendors, a minimum of 5% is due when we order, bounce on delivery, there's finance options. There's a 100% prepaid discount at the time of the PO. One of our vendors we're dealing with right now has a $21,000 discount. Just received a phone call just prior to walking up here from one of the vendors that told me that the third-party vendor would give us a trade-in value of $85,000. That's another significant amount we're gonna produce that purchase. Current bill time is 330 days. So the goal would be to order early 2022 and see that early 2023. And in a minute, I'll go through kind of what we're trying to do as far as matching up our reserve and front-end programs. This engine does qualify, the 2007, the Clean Air Funding Program through the North Central Texas Council of Governments. Wonderful grant. It's 25% of the total cost and all the equipment on a piece of fire apparatus. However, right now, they have less than $109,000 in that grant opportunity. And they said it's, it's pretty much done and they don't, that's already been applied for several months. Next thing though would be in October. They don't yet know if they're going to have that. Do have that, we'll obviously apply for it and see what we can get. If we do, that would be significant. You see what the gadgets we have is in it. Also, the town's been gracious in the budget. Literally, they added 250,000 air miles to help with any additional funds in case that grant might come to fruition. This new engine, the name COVID and anti-harris reduction, firefighter cancer prevention. It's kind of called, we refer to it as a clean data concept and it's kind of a, a new age in firefighting where we don't have carcinogens inside the cab itself. The firefighting gear, PPE, our, our air packs that we use will all be outside, quickly accessed so that we can get in that gear as we're making our 360 assessment of that situation of destructive hours. This speed and allow us to fight that fire, to keep those carcinogens outside and not in that cab where we're breathing them in and having them door-bellied. Let's see here, I referred to this a little bit. So there was no set plan on how often we place our equipment. So with that, there's going to be a time in the future where the replacement period between aerial truck and a pumper might get close together. And it would be close enough that it would be very difficult to properly raise the funds for the purchase. So what we're going to try to do, what we'd like to do by purchasing this engine in 2022, excuse me, receive it in 2023, is, our goal is to have everything served as a front year, a 10-year frontline piece of equipment, and then it turns to reserve status for 10 years. We want to extend from now to service time to 20 years to 15. We think we can do that because of it, mainly because of the squad concept that we have in place. It's going to put less oil and tear on that fire apparatus. We think we can extend the life of those to 20 years. We need to get them on a 10-to-10 plan, if that makes sense. So what we would do by ordering this engine now, theoretically run frontline for an extra two years, then run 10, well, excuse me, on frontline. A truck upon its receipt would go to reserve status and it would run reserve for 12 years. At that point, in 2035, if we buy a new aerial truck, it would go frontline status. This engine we're about to purchase would go to reserve status, and then from that point, it would be a 10-to-10 stacker. So every 20 years, a piece of equipment will go out of service, but every 10 years, it would be reversed. And that, that never, Apex never comes together. We bond within two, three, four years of each other. That's an idea of that. Budget recap, again, 0.27% increase. I'm seeing it broken down there, the squad concept, on squad concept, continue with firefighter staffing. Continue to fill those vacancies with part-time first. Limit the effects of overtime. Then, in addition to COVID, it's been a very challenging year with our personnel because the experience comes a little bit of age, but also we're tactical activities. We get injured, we rehab just like an athlete. That's how we do it with firefighters. And so what we do day in and day out, you get injured from that. And so we've had some long-term surgeries and rehabs this year. In fact, we've got seven out of our 15 personnel have had surgeries. Two are out right now. Expect one back in a couple of weeks, hopefully this balance is January. It's been an unprecedented year. I think about where I came from, where I had 410 firefighters had this same percentage of 47%. I'm looking at 207, like, who have been out and served that year. And that's mind-boggling. But it's all relative. It's, it's the same, it has the same effect on us. So we've been, been very creative at how we try to limit that. And as you see, our total sick rate hours this year, 19 and 20, were 911 hours. This year, 724, not counting our 20 hours. So it's been extremely unprecedented. So we expect that to fall back. Not only an 11, but it's going to fall closer to 20. So all entertaining questions you have at this point. I appreciate your patience as we work through this.
All right, I would, I would imagine that you still have your qualifications, so you could help. Uh, one question I had, on, on the second page of the budget, on the back page, under programs and special projects, I think that under, kind of under Lasky, it, it, he, he really ramped up the engagement of firefighters out in the community. And then I think that, that got pushed even more when Wade came along and probably, you know, even more since you've come aboard. I, I noticed that, that in 2020, we approved 14, nine, but we actually used 18. And we're dropping that down to 16. So I'm, I'm wondering if that, I, I understand that, you know, you couldn't get out in the community during COVID, so that dropped, you know, to 4,000. But I'm wondering if that's too low? Because I, I think that one thing, certainly, I see it on the council side, but anytime first responders such as police or fire are in the community, it's certainly a ton of goodwill to, to the town. And so I'm just wondering if that is, if, if we perhaps should go up some on that, you know, and, and if that's enough, or if you think that that's too low?
Well, I think that with that lineup, we put a huge emphasis on our outreach program. And I think that we've, we've become more efficient with what we're doing with that. We're doing more now than we're, we really put a lot in place and we have more coming down the pipe. We have fall patient assessments that we want to put in place. Reach out and start a community care medicine program where we go out and visit with patients that we see on a regular basis to try to limit the amount of their burden on EMS system, but try to get them the help they need in other times. There's a lot of things we're trying to morph into here. Also, with our community outreach program, our community risk reduction program, with our puppet program and our marshal Cochran, who's our deputy chief, he's put a lot of things in place. That's one reason that we were able to get that goal to work in the state of market appreciation. That's a, that's a direct reflection on how we outreach for the community. We have little programs that are coming down the pipe that we, we have plenty of for. The only thing right now, I think we're in a good place with our costs. What we found is a little bit more efficiency with our citizens' fire academy costs, our open house costs, things of that nature where they can still accommodate and accomplish the things we need to do with those.
Yeah. Again, and, and that's fine. I just, I just want to know, I just want you to know that from my perspective, and I think probably most of us up here, that I'd much rather put more money to that because it does give goodwill to the town, to the community, and I, I think it's, I think it's helpful. You know, I, I, I see more positive comments when first responders are out in the community and interacting with citizens.
Councilmember Schaffner, 2020's increased cost in that lineup, that's when the puppet program came about? So there was a, about a $4,000 expense in putting that program in place?
I guess what I'm saying is, is again, think outside the box. If, if there's more things that you can bring, I think the more you do for the community on both police and fire side, it's, it's, it's a positive. That's what I'm trying to.
Great.
Well, thank you, Chief. And on behalf of the council side, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Trophy Club Fire Protection Services for the Fiscal Year Ending 2022 budget.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Pretend Lamont and a second by council member Sheridan. Any discussion? All in favor on the council side? All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Any further questions over here on that? Okay. Mr. Rose?
Uh, I do have more than one. Went through the budget and if we go to the personnel section, merits? You show merits for $13,550, not previously carried and not carried projected forward. Can you explain, please?
Yes, sir. That's a merit raise. There are merit raises coming across the board for the town to sell all that. Mr. Carroll touched on that.
So with the merit raises in this coming year, we have it budgeted on the town side for an approximate 2% increase. That will be a merit increase so that there will be a certain portion of that that will be a COLA or a cost of living adjustment, a small portion. So we're still working on the numbers and what that looks like, but we're thinking around somewhere like a 1% COLA and then the rest of that money that's set aside in that pot, which the pot is a 2% of our overall cost for employees, salaries only. And then we would look at the rest of that going towards high performers. So with a evaluation-based model.
And so the answer to my question then is there is currently a merit system in, in process, in, in place?
Yes, sir.
For the fire personnel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hey, Bill, excuse me, before you get to the second question or third, whatever that might be, Mayor Fleury?
Thank you. Before I adjourn on the town council side, thank you, President Flynn and the rest of the mud board. As former Mayor Nick Sanders had mentioned earlier, it's really important for us to work together and I'm really pleased that we've had this collaborative relationship and I thank you for hosting us this evening. And so I will adjourn, the town council side of the joint meeting at 6:16 PM. And Town Manager Carroll, if staff wants to stay and answer questions, that's great. But the rest of council will head over to town hall for our meeting this evening. That's okay. Thank you again.
Just give us one second, Bill. Let them adjourn. All right, let's get back on track. Director Rose?
Okay. So then in that case, looking at the budget, that if that has previously been included in the salary line, is that correct? The 13,550 would have been previously included. So then the salaries actually went up more than what would be indicated. I would say that the 13,550 would then be projected to some extent going forward?
Yes.
And to reference your comp, your cost of living increase number that you're working with, I've heard recently as high as 6%, just as an FYI.
I understand.
Now, down to, down in that line, there's a cell phone stipend of $1,800. Once again, that's something that is not previously in the budget. It is, shows carried forward. Can you explain that, please?
Yes, sir. My understanding is that is being carried, either salaries.
That's correct.
Past, they split that out so that it can be seen. It's always been in there, always been split between the town and the mud. That's cell phone stipend for myself and for our, our.
Okay. I see under, also down, just a few lines down, medical insurance is going down in cost? I find that a question mark. I would ordinarily expect, everybody talks about cost of insurance is going up.
We went out for RFP, our HR department went out for an RFP for new provider for insurance this last year, or new broker, rather. And we've been assured that we're going to be coming in at least at flat, possibly less.
Okay. On, on the very bottom line, down on the personnel section, is tuition assistance, or tuition reimbursement. And I was wondering how we come up with the $8,290, which has been constant over the last three years and we have consistently failed to achieve that number? So I'm wondering how do, how do we defend that number or if a lower number might be more appropriate?
That number is put in by HR. That number is predicated on the amount that we give them as far as the number of individuals that we have that are going to work on college degrees. There'd be associates or bachelors or masters. We give them that number and, if I'm not mistaken, we have four on the list for this year. That is the amount that they carry.
It looks to me, it appears to me to be nothing more than a number that's carried forward from one year to the other.
And didn't we have two get masters and bachelor degrees?
Complete them.
We did.
So it seems like it'd be higher this year than, you know, I don't know what the four are going to go for.
This is a cost that's split with the town, right, for all employees. And there's a maximum number by town policy that they're allowed to apply for. So that number is split in half. Like Chief Taylor mentioned, we go out, it's, it's a guaranteed benefit for the town, for all employees. So we ask all employees who plans to attend college in the next year and they give us the, the degree program, the number of hours that they plan to take, and we just extrapolate that cost out. When you're hitting that, that 82, 90, that's hitting that maximum number is the, is the reason that looks like it's being carried forward. That's that maximum number. And I think it's $5,900, a little over $5,900 a year that's split in half. So those, those that are hitting that number is, is why that looks like that. Because they're not going to get any more than that number from us by policy.
Well, yeah, I understand that. But if you look at the preceding three years, you had 3.2, 1.5, and 5.6.
Yes, sir. That, that all depends on firefighters actually taking classes. So that's the, that'd be the key. Our problem is if we don't budget for that number and they do sign up for those classes, then we don't budget enough money in the budget to cover the expense. That's a, that is a benefit guaranteed to them.
I asked them who wants to take classes and what, how many they expect to take that year.
Yeah.
We know what those classes cost. I get with HR and determine that factor now. They're not set on having to take that amount of classes that year. They can take more than their amount that they get.
It may be 52.
That's the amount that you allotted on that.
Okay, so they can take more classes, they just not reimbursed?
That's correct.
They could, absolutely.
Yeah. So basically, what we're saying is the ability is there, it's funded. If it, if they don't use the funding, then the funding just rolls over into subsequent, you know, rolls back. Okay.
Correct. And if I have four that say they're going to take classes and then a fifth one comes up and says they would like to, they had an opportunity to step forward, so they're not included in that. So they either need to pay it for it themselves or they need to wait to the next fiscal year and apply.
Well, they would be able to take their classes. If the funding remained available, they'd be able to take it. I mean, you could have eight people taking a minimum class load or four people taking a full class load, right? Cost. Stay within cost.
I wouldn't bump one of my four that signed up for one that can't wait. That makes sense.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I would analyze that, keep up with that to make sure.
Okay, okay.
That's a good question.
Uh, down in total personnel, oh, I mean, sorry, that was total personnel. Down in services and supplies, just below total personnel, we have advertising.
Yes, sir.
Advertising for $1,500. For three years, it's been $1,500. And for three years, $0 have been used.
It has. And my understanding, that came in, and former Chief Carroll can probably attest to this, it was put in place for promotional video for a hire. The hire didn't take place, so it wasn't used. Now, I got in late last year, so we didn't utilize that. My plan is to utilize that. However, this year, with the COVID challenges we've had, the video wasn't a possibility. But the town has hired a production company that is doing videos for them. Number one, I analyze how they're doing and actually they're doing a great job. This is for advertising. What I would like to do with that is morph that into more social media presence. Because it's advertising in that way to get out of our work, look at education, things of that nature. And also, we've never done an annual report, like, part, producing a professional annual report, you know, and fund that advertising portion.
To, to piggyback on that, at this very meeting two years ago, Wade might remember, this question came up from, I believe, one of the council members, that we weren't using the advertising money. And that was kind of two years ago and here we are again. So I think that's the point. So if you're going to use it, fine. But if not, then maybe sharpening the pencil is appropriate.
I agree. And that's something that we can look at in the future, put it in the programs and special program, projects that we talked about or that. That's something that had been used. And I hope to use that, if that's something that, my vision on that is to enhance our footprint in social media with that, but also with the annual report. If that's a direction I would like to go, that's where I would like to take it. I don't think that it fits us from a video standpoint. Now, we have the capability with the town. That has changed this year. So that's what I'd like to do with that.
Okay. So you get, you get, you get the point?
No, absolutely.
Yeah. And I, I questioned the, yeah, your, your turnover in the fire department. How much turnover do you have? How much recruiting do you really do?
Well, it's, it's been a high amount in past years. I've had two, about to have a third since I've been here. However.
Guys retire, but, I mean, I'm talking about, not retirements, I'm talking about, I'm going someplace else for a different reason.
I've had one leave because of that. A second one, contemplating it right now. However, I think in the past, it's been an issue. I think one thing that we've done that, that I think works very well for our department is the fact that we're all firefighters, paramedics, including myself. I don't think that this town, this organization is going to do so to hire a brand-new off-the-street, get them trained, put them on staff here. And they wonder what it's like in the big city and you can't get that itch out of them. So it's, they're going to go, and so you're going to lose them and have that turnover. But what we've been doing, what I've implemented and what I've tried to do, and another benefit of our part-time program is the fact that those part-time firefighters fit our culture. They work here or they don't last. And usually, it's our firefighters that bring. And usually, it's our firefighters that bring them to us. They know them from other departments. They're career firefighters from, I don't know, Keller United. They're from other really good fire departments that when they're here, and they're in uniform, you can't tell them from our full-time staff. They're all Trophy Club when they're here, or I don't let them stay. But what that has done for us is the last two that I've hired, hired off of my part-time staff. I've been able to go to them and hire within two weeks from part-time staff, hire quality personnel, and just did it here recently. This one's been on a month. We actually did his first month evaluation today, and he's blowing them away. So that's working really well for us. Now, on the downside of that one, a part-time, what our challenge is, is our career departments that they work for, they're starting to limit how much they can work for fire departments and for healthcare entities, because they're worried about them becoming afflicted by diseases, injuries. They foot the bill for that. The career department, if they get hurt with us, they're on sick leave at home, so they have to foot that bill. And so they're starting to limit that, and we're starting to see dwindling numbers. It's becoming very difficult to replace the part-timers that we lose. And then they also, they get mandatory for overtime at their own departments. For instance, we have one scheduled tomorrow for part-time, calls today and says, I got mandatory tomorrow. And that, that's okay, we understand that. But that causes us to have to hire overtime. And so we have that in place as well. And then we have a lot of our departments that provides part-timers, that they deploy their personnel. We have a free part-time personnel for a moment. And they have deployed so much, wildland fires and things such as that, that we can't have them for several months. So it's a, kind of on a Giga, a Giga puzzle, balanced on one piece of wood with our part-timers. And as long as that equilibrium is stable, we're in good shape. But that, that's my fear, is that that's going to come crashing down at some point. We lose that opportunity for our part-time. And that's another reason that I talk about adding the three. That's a fear of mine, that's a true fear of mine for part-time.
Okay, in the essence of time, Bill, let's keep moving. Do you have more questions?
Certainly.
Okay, continue.
Schools and training on down there. Once again, we've got nineteen-nine showing there. That number flows across, and the maximum we've ever had in that line item is fourteen-four utilized. How do we justify that?
Since I've been here, I have not been able to utilize all of it, because of the situation we've been in with COVID. Before I got here last March, it hit us in Dallas County five weeks before. I dealt with that. The week I got here is the week it hit us. That's the week Mayor Sanders' son got sick, and that's the week it all started. So that, that changed our entire dynamic on how we could train, and where we can send individuals. We had so many classes being canceled during that timeframe. We had to limit all of our travel training has been canceled. So that's been an ongoing challenge for us. I'd like to ask that, I think with some of the efficiency we've put in place, I don't think we'll spend as much in the future. I think there might be a point where we can ask for less. I'd like to add a more normal year to really dictate that, because I think that we're going to have the opportunity now, but from talking to the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, all the other entities that we go train with, those are going to be opened back up one more.
Do you, so to justify the nineteen-nine, because I was looking at fifteen-five, frankly. To justify the nineteen-nine, would you say that you anticipate, due to the COVID effect, that there would be more schools and training picked up the coming fiscal year versus what we see in the past?
More opportunities, that's what you're saying? Yes, sir.
More opportunities, or more, I'm looking at utilization.
Yes, sir. That's what we're looking at. There's going to be more opportunities out there.
Okay, well, opportunities is one thing. Capitalizing on those opportunities is an entirely different dynamic. Building maintenance. Let's see if I can get this going, my system to work for me. The next one I have is vehicle maintenance, forty thousand eight hundred dollars. Why? I mean, I'm looking, I look across, we were at forty-six, dropped to thirty-one-eight, down to twelve-five last year for COVID. But we've got forty thousand, forty thousand eight, eight hundred dollars, which is the same as the previous year.
Well, that twelve-five ninety is the estimate for twenty twenty-one.
I got that.
Which that estimate is, I guess, based on percentage of what you use throughout the year. However, I can tell you right now, I believe we spent that twelve thousand, we had about nine thousand, if you hear voices right now.
Okay.
We're about to be over twenty. I know that we have a full set of tires we replaced and one piece of apparatus, that's another three thousand. By the time of this fiscal year, it's over another two months, you're going to be closer to thirty.
Okay.
Is what we plan on us to be on that. So that's just timing on our preventive maintenance is scheduled and how things come up. And then we've had some repairs come up lately that are unexpected, so we've had those.
I understand. And I saw, I saw a fire truck parked in front of Tom Thumb with a tow, tow unit tied up to it.
On that same, on that same line item, that would be the numbers you had in your PowerPoint for six-eighty-one? You said it averaged seventeen-five for the past three years or something in maintenance, didn't you?
We've had seventy-eight thousand in the last five years.
On six-eighty-one?
Yeah, in six-eighty-one, it's had seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of repairs since two thousand sixteen.
Where's the numbers here? I mean, I thought it said like seventeen-five averaging over the last three years.
Seventeen over, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, those three years, it averaged seventeen thousand a year.
So if you.
Last year, actually, we pushed it. We pushed it. We had no repairs on it last year. And this year, we've had twenty-four hundred so far this year, and probably another twenty-four hundred coming up.
So how do these numbers, like the projected right now is twelve, as Bill mentioned, and then forty thousand was projected. In twenty twenty, it was thirty-one. Add that, about seventeen on an average was towards six-eighty-one?
Yes, sir.
More than half the vehicle maintenance is on one piece of equipment. It's the oldest. It's the oldest.
The oldest one, yeah, so.
It's the oldest one.
Oldest and most.
It doesn't get driven that much, but, and that could be a plus or a minus.
It's a minus, and that's one reason our, our people, our staff, they work them every day. They work both pieces of apparatus every day. And they do that to try to keep them as regular as possible. You just can't replicate making, making those runs. And one thing I've put in place since I've been here, is we try to run that reserve piece of equipment one full week every month. And that's, we've done that last year, that's helped as well. It's really been a, a big difference, is to keep it primed better, to keep it in better shape.
That's pretty rude, you know?
Yeah.
Kevin, do you have questions?
I have a couple on my.
All right, why don't we turn it over to you?
Do you, you have some more?
Yeah, I do. Equipment maintenance, next line down.
Yes, sir.
Eighteen-seven-fifteen. Previous three years, eleven thousand, five thousand seven hundred, and call it eight thousand. How do we justify eighteen-seven?
Eighteen-seven, to break it down completely, our cascade system, which is, is how we replenish our air bottles, with our pressurized cascade. That quality testing every year is twenty-five hundred dollars. Our annual hose testing is two thousand dollars. Our annual SCBA, which is our air packs, the flow testing for that is seventeen fifty. Annual testing and maintenance of extrication equipment is twelve hundred and fifty. That's the tools that we use to cut people up when we have an accident. This landis, maintenance repairs of loose equipment, that's, that's unexpected. Loose equipment, breakages on our extrication equipment, different things of that nature. Our saws, there's five thousand in there for that. Ladder testing, we have to have our ladders tested every year annually, twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Then radio maintenance program, which is, we repair any broken radios, replace radial parts, that's fifteen hundred dollars as well. And then SCBA cylinder replacement, we have in there, we had six air cylinders. That, they're on a fifteen-year lifespan. Six that hit this year. We don't have any more that hit till twenty twenty-six. But we have six that hit this year, and they're eighty-five dollars apiece.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's actually on the detail line that, thanks to town manager, he sent out the detail line. Now, because with budget, you see detail, I could answer that question just by reading the detail line. We just got that at like two, two o'clock or something like that. But thanks for that.
And the last one I'll ask about is down under, under fire hardware. Looks like it may be slightly over. Can you, it's another one of these numbers that seems to migrate from year to year to year and never change. Was four fifty-eight twenty twenty, four fourteen, I'm sorry, forty-four fifty-eight twenty twenty-one, proposed forty-four fifty-eight twenty twenty-two, hardware under fire.
That particular one is for, that's for our hardware, our equipment, and that has to go with our laptops, our computers.
Okay.
That's our replenishment for the laptops, every computer within the department itself. One thing we found from, previously done several years ago, is every laptop that we have within the city. It's a very big challenge to us. Wade can touch on that, because he's had to deal with that firsthand. That, that's what that's for, is for the rotation of those computers and things that are coming up. A rotation basis, but a little bit of that had to speed up because of the fact that we found, once we got the new Versitrus company that's on board, is our new IT representative, they found that a very, very high percentage of all of our equipment off the first.
Okay, okay. So basically, what we're saying is, we're looking at some additional cost next year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's enough for me. Thank you.
Okay, Kevin?
Two short ones, thank you. Mr. President, the workers' comp, did you get an answer on that, why the percentage was so different?
I don't know that answer, Mike.
Yeah. The state provides the percentage that we use on workers' comp on that, is it workers' comp or the unemployment that you asked about?
It's unemployment, excuse me.
Yes, sir. On the unemployment rate, we're given that rate by the state, and it went up this year to two point eight percent.
That's quite an increase, and we've used in the past. I mean, it's a small number based on, but it looks like a big percent. And then I was kind of just curious, because I haven't been on the board for a couple of years or whatever, but what happened to flag repair?
What happened to what?
Flag repair.
Flag repair? That just changed this year? Good question. We'll still have that. They've moved that under facilities. So that account is going under facilities. However, the fire department will always maintain, change the flags, we raise them, lower them. We'll continue to do that. We'll continue to monitor all that, just like we have before. The actual contract and the line item budget for that will actually be under facilities. Because it's, it's, to be honest, I didn't like it in the line item, because once every three years, it inflated for no reason. It just was an awful fit for it to be in the facilities, and Wade agreed with that, and that's what we're moving forward with.
Director Carr.
But it won't change.
Director Carr, that got changed to the facilities on the town side. It was taken out of the mud budget completely.
You do the one on the fire station, the front, and your.
We'll do the one, we'll continue to do the one on the mud building, just like we always have.
Slide my house in there, or something like that?
How about the new flags at the, the three flags at the flagpoles that we're getting done? Where's that?
We'll, we'll take care of that, too.
Yeah, one last thing. I talked to town manager, which is very nice to explain, the fire truck usage. I mean, it has fifty-five thousand miles on it, and everyone looks at, okay, we have very little runs compared to other cities, but not to a subdivision or something within that city. That's where we should be comparing ourselves, rather than the whole city itself. And he was very good. I don't know if you want to mention that, or?
If you, I can tell you, off the top of my head, we have, I take Southlake or Grapevine. I take Westlake. They make about a third of the runs we do. Wherever, Southlake makes three thousand responses per service a year. That's a whole within the town. We make, we're on average, well, we're estimated right now, we've had six hundred and fifty-five responses this year. We're on track to twelve hundred. Which is an increase for us, a thousand, but we're on track for twelve hundred. Across the board, every department I talk to are seeing me saying. There's a number for reasons, of reasons for that. I don't think it's COVID related, because we don't run on that many COVID runs now. However, Southlake, for instance, makes three thousand runs a year. We make, we're going to make twelve hundred this year, it looks like. It looks like a little bit of a difference, but if you talk apples to apples, and you look at each of their stations, they have three to our one. So their average is a thousand and hundred per station, and we're estimating that for our, our district, which is our whole town. Take Grapevine, for instance, they make six thousand calls for service each year. They do that with five stations. Well, that's twelve hundred runs per station, which is right on track with where we are. So if you look apples to apples at what we do, we're on track with that, and I see us increasing with an older demographic and some aging houses in this town, and some of the fires that we saw earlier this year that were completely due to the age of the house, wear and tear on them because of those fires. And I think that you're going to see those, those numbers continue to gradually raise. Not, not quickly, but I think they're just going to creep up each year. But I really think we're on the same plane with those two departments, and how we put our crews head-to-head with any, any day.
One last comment, and it's kind of a sore spot with me, because always looking at ways of getting grants or reducing, you know, taxpayers' expenses. And there was money from the COVID fund. I talked to Denton County, I talked to Austin, and I said, well, you know, we basically pay the budget on the fire, and the EMS is fully funded by the town. And the town received money for fire EMS. It, they're mostly EMS, talking to town manager, Carol, and we were, you know, I was being told at least that, you know, it was overtime hours for the fire department, and it would be offset. Obviously, that's not happening. It was overtime hours applied strictly to EMS. And knowing that, I think we missed the boat on trying to get funding for firefighters, because I'm sure the firefighters had to use COVID protocol and use certain equipment, and masks, and gloves, and things like that. And we never applied for it. And that didn't sit well with me. It wasn't, I mean, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but, you know, I think we missed that opportunity, which is my two cents.
Okay. Mr. Rose is leaving the, okay, we have a question, all right? Because we're going to, I will entertain a motion after Mr. Rose's. Give me one second.
We can, we can make a motion and just not call for the vote, you know, get a motion in a second.
Well, he's coming back.
I say, before we do that, I appreciate your time, appreciate your support. One thing that my personnel and I always talk about is the fact that, I came from a department where I spent most of my career in a fire station that was built in the nineteen fifties. A lot of older equipment. Had to make, make do with what we have with this community, our elected officials. The quality, other than the air conditioning issue today, but the quality of facility that we have is exceptional. The equipment we have is exceptional. I think our personnel are exceptional. I think that they are a step above any other department around here. And I told them from day one, it doesn't matter if we have one fire department, one station, if we have twenty-five stations. I want people looking at Trophy Club to see what we do, and ask about what we are doing. And that's already started to happen, and our guys have that buy-in. And I think the sky's the limit for us, because they really take a lot of pride in this department, in this community. They love the outreach, and they're, they're just chomping at the bit to really get out there and get back into school and do those things. So I just want to thank all of you for the time, and I appreciate the questions. I think that give and take is part of it, is part of that transparency and understanding that we have. My door is always open to any of you. Please come by, call me anytime if you have a question. I'm always there, and I'm always happy to answer your question or just show you around if you'd like to. So I want you to know, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Chief Taylor, and thank you on behalf of the board. Outstanding job. We're proud of the fire department, and we're proud, we're part of that. And you've done a spectacular job. So thank you for all, you and your team does.
I just had one thing to add. The people you mentioned, the elected officials and the staff, the big thing is you have residents' support, and the volunteers that, you know, help you out. I mean, they do, you know, unbelievable job.
Our volunteers are second to none. Our TCBA are wonderful. And I, I thank them every time I see them, and every opportunity I have. And our residents, you know, I tell people, they ask me, I live here, I take pride in living in Trophy Club, is in here, you're Stacy and I have. We bought in to live in this community, and people, you know, jokingly refer to it as Mayberry, and I'll tell people that, but it is a very affluent and a very high expectation level, which is a really, it's just a really cool concept, and it's something you don't see everywhere. So the quality of people that we have in this community, I tell my firefighters day in and day out, you never know who you're responding to out there, who they are, who they know. The people that we deal with in this community are exceptional. And they're taking the brand, and they don't, they buy into that, and I would agree, my residents and my volunteers.
Chief, I hate to interrupt you, but, Mr. President, yeah, I've got, I've got another meeting to go to at seven o'clock.
I know, I know you do, so.
So I apologize for having to leave early, but thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you guys for staying over. Dennis, thank you. Philip, thank you for staying. Okay, someone would like to make a motion?
You want to make one?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to take appropriate action regarding the Fire Protection Service fiscal budget.
Twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-two, as proposed?
As proposed.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two budget as proposed by Chief Taylor, second by Director Carr. All those in favor?
Discussion.
Well, we've had a lot of discussion.